And you know, he's crying about it because he couldn't come, so we'll do him. Okay. Whatever we want to. On the consent agenda, Ryan Menzies is a Pearson Elementary School custodian at South Whitley. So, I'll get it right in the minutes. And all the resignation or retirement letters are in the folder if you want to pass that around. And then Sandra has been here 22 years and Wayne has been here 43.
That's a long time.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, I'm heading back out.
Is that it?
Well, that's enough.
I don't know why Mr. Evans is not sitting up here to skip over.
Okay.
The only one I know of. Well, then, I'm concerned about. Hold on, my story.
Okay.
But, uh... Look, are you tomorrow, Monday? I think I may have though.
Hey, Lan. All right. I haven't even got me. Oh, no, it's fine, it's just been a little rushed.
Yeah, it's actually... But yes, they do recommend, Mark D'Angelo said that PBC is after today, PBC is a better route. It has a longer life expectancy. Caps, what, caps and staff in places of high water table, it's better, and we can have a high water table.
I read it.
I read it.
Chris Hopper's here. I don't see her, I don't see her.
He's probably still in Florida.
Hopefully, they can see it now.
As far as I know, it'll be here.
I didn't want them looking at me. Look at the eyes on this little guy.
My God. Flash my family away.
Now we can start. See, it does for last.
Shiner.
No, no, these are things that were sent to us.
Oh, okay.
All right, it's 6:30, we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting tonight with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no media present tonight, so we're gonna move into our Students of the Month. We're gonna start with Elena Kreps from Whitco Senior High, nominated by Don Dick.
All right, hi, I'm Don Dick, I nominated Elena Kreps. I said she was motivated, inquisitive, and hardworking, but underlying that, the big reason is that she's got a growth mindset. She understands that classwork and homework are for learning, she asks appropriate questions, and she's gonna have a really bright future.
Thank you. Congratulations to Elena. From the Whitco Junior High, we have nominated by Mr. Mike Handback, Meredith Heinbach.
Am I supposed to use this one? Okay. I nominated Meredith for a couple of reasons, many of which Don just talked about. When you have a student come into the classroom and give it their all, when you have their attention all the time, when they ask questions that are just really good questions, when you recognize the fact that they're there because they wanna be there, they're there for the reason they wanna learn, you can't do anything but really respect people like that, and those are the kind of people that I think we, as educators, really value in our classroom. So, and Meredith is definitely one of those. Thanks.
Congratulations to Meredith. From Whitco Career Academy, nominated by Megan Anderson, we have Lillian Coyle.
All right, I nominated Lillian Coyle for a couple of different reasons. First off, academically, Lillian excels in the classroom, and I can always count on her to come to class beyond prepared, ready to learn, and her assignments are literally amazing. I look forward to her work because of the effort that she puts into her assignments academically. I can also always count on Lillian to help others if they're struggling a little bit or falling a little bit behind, and I just know that she as a student I can count on to go above and beyond.
Congratulations, Lillian. From South Whitley Elementary, nominated by Emily Duggins, we have Madeline Abbott.
Okay, hi, my name is Emily Duggins, I'm a 4th grade teacher at South Whitley, and I nominated Maddie for many reasons, but I'm just gonna stand up here and brag a little bit about her and tell you some things that I really love about Maddie. So, Maddie's kind, she's helpful, she's caring, even when things are hard, she continues to push on and try, which is a really hard thing for 4th graders to do. We get into long division and they're like, "This is awful." But Maddie continues to work hard through it all and doesn't ever give me that face of, "Uh-oh, I'm giving up." She is, I think I wanna, I wanna talk about this. Maddie is an amazing person through and through, and I think as adults, we're really good about thinking about we, what we want, what I want, what makes me happy, and we sometimes forget to think about other people. And Maddie, as a 10-year-old, constantly thinks about the people around her. She constantly makes everyone around her feel valued and loved and important, and I think that that trait in such a young student is something truly amazing. And I mean it when I say that, I'm a better educator and I'm a better person because Maddie is in my class. So, thanks.
Congratulations to Maddie. From Pearson Elementary, nominated by Madison Moss, is Bridget Rogers.
So, I'm Kristi Hopper, the principal at Pearson Elementary, so I'm with our Student of the Month in place of Mrs. Maddie Moss. And this is Bridget Rogers. And the reason Mrs. Moss chose her is because she's always working hard, follows directions, completes her work, and is kind to everybody. Mrs. Moss can always count on her to do the right thing. She shows up to class every day with a smile on her face and has a true love for learning. Congratulations to you, little girl. Thank you.
Congratulations, Bridget. And our Little Cat of the Month is Clay Jenkins, he was nominated by Jennifer Doms. Clay is not feeling well tonight, so we are gonna go ahead and celebrate him next month. Hopefully, he can be here that night. So, next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do our little headliners, which is great news from around the district. And once we're done with this Students of the Month, if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to do so. So, tonight's headliners, first of all, we're gonna talk about decking the halls. Members of the Whitco FFA chapter visited Miller's Merry Manor in Columbia City to spread Christmas cheer with Christmas carols. They received donations from several businesses and the Branning family to provide Miller's residents with Christmas gifts. Members who attended were Isaac Irwin, Ally Ridenhour, Amy Brown, Justine Oaken, Cohen Shipper, Anna Sikathus, Lily Sikathus, Holly Branning, Carly Schroth, Olivia Anderson, Sophie Keener, and Natalie Johns. Another bullseye, a big thanks to Whitetails Unlimited, whose members donated $2,000 to Whitco's archery club. The funds will keep the club in tournament traveling money. And finally, we had our alumni band night this past weekend, a boys' basketball game. It was great to see and hear so many alumni join forces with the high school pep band to celebrate another Whitco win. That's it for headliners tonight. Students of the Month, if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to do so. We're gonna move on into our principal and director reports. Mr. Evans is not here this evening. Next panelist is Jamie Pano, our Director of Alternative Services.
Good morning, actually, good evening, it's been a long day. It's been a very long day. So, our current events at the Whitco Early Learning Academy are that I am working on switching all of our vouchers over to be under the new license. It is a timely thing, but once it is complete, the reimbursement rates will increase. We are working on having our Path to Quality rating, which is scheduled to happen in the new year. We are marketing, right now I'm in the middle of marketing, to hire and train new staff in preparation for growth. We will have a large advertising, another large advertising and marketing push in January and February to fill all of our new spots. I am working on rebranding our logo, and if you noticed on the board report, there's another logo I came up with. And we are going to be picking out furniture for the new classrooms and planning our open house celebration. With the Whitco homeschool pathway, we have several families showing interest. I'm completing our second semester enrollments now. We've adopted a new virtual literacy intervention program for students pre-K through 6th grade. And right now, I've been working on the Workforce Employer Grant, and it's been completed, and we'll find out if we have won that in January. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Hopper from Pearson Elementary.
Good evening. Student Council's been involved in a lot of things for Christmas, the holidays. They had Thankfulness Project of collecting toiletries for the community. They've also earned some money through a cookie fundraiser that they're putting to use. I don't know what that is yet, but they are planning some things for the spring. The bench for Whitley, South Whitley Elementary is almost, the jugs are almost there, we're like within just a few, and I know there's a pizza party coming for the class who collected the most. And they also made lots of Christmas cards for local nursing homes, and they hosted a staff launch, so they've been very busy. I've been very proud of all the things that they've been a part of and looking forward to second semester. Winter NWA, I'm just interested in kind of finishing that up after Christmas break and seeing what that data and that growth in reading and math is and comparing it to our, all our data in our reading program. I know people are looking forward to that continuing to go upwards. Upcoming clusters of professional development, we're doing lots of data dives, a lot of things around small groups, quick checks for the progress monitoring to make sure that we are on target and doing this correctly. Growth plans for teachers, we're gonna dig into that a little more deeply second semester. We're waiting for some more direction there, but we look forward to having more targeted staff development and growth in individual teachers' areas. And my last main thing is the vision and mission. We did a lot of work during ILT, but we're kinda waiting to roll that out, but we're ready to do that for second semester, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like with our staff and talking around that. And Aaron's presentations, we are a little bit behind the A-ball on that, but we were able to get those scheduled, so shout out to Mrs. Stephanie Hupp, our mental health specialist, for coordinating that. So, that is education around sexual assault and abuse awareness, so we wanted to make sure we got that in for first semester, and that'll be taking place tomorrow and the next day, so right before winter break. We have some fun things coming up for the staff, a Christmas program with sing-alongs for grade levels, the 12 Days of Christmas for staff, I'm not sure what all that is entailing yet, but, so we should have some fun with the kids at last day of school. And PTO meets again on January 17th, and they are planning Valentine's Day stuff and a lot of spring things, ideas that they have floating around. And I'm gonna land on ARC, some celebrations. Mr. Borman was talking about when he does a meet with a student for conferencing, they've been reminding him, so he's pretty pumped about that, that they missed reading with him, so. And just celebrations around that we had, gosh, like nine students out of 16 don't have to have their read-to-me intervention anymore, so that's falling off, so that's showing progress there. So, lots of hard work around the reading program, and the data on the last couple pages of the report just shows that almost every single grade level is trending upward. So, Pearson was almost at, excuse me, 40% on target for reading, so that was pretty cool. So, I think that's all I have really fast, but...
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From South Whitley Elementary, Mr. Joel Halsoppel.
All right, so as you know, we've been trying to lay the groundwork with our ARC curriculum, lots of processes and procedures, and we're trying to get more comfortable with that. This last time, last week, we had a meeting with our ARC coach where we dug into the data. And one of the really cool things for me is you can look at the data and ask yourself, "What do the kids need to do?" But the powerful and transformative piece is when we look at the data and we say, "What can we do as teachers? What do I need to do differently so that my kids learn it?" Of course, our students, they need to be responsive and working with us too, but it's really a teacher's job to shift, and how can I present the content so that they learn it? So, we're working at that. Then I wanted to share, and a little bit more fun and what I'm really proud of though too, we do the pledge each morning, and I have students who come and help me. And I started saying good morning to students who are there, and the kids have started saying good morning to teachers or friends also. One of the things I'm most proud of is this girl, after hearing that, then she wanted to say thank you to someone, and it was really cool, 'cause we just need to be more grateful. I need to be more grateful, and I want that for our school, for our staff. So, I wanted you to know that too, that we had one of our students who brought that up. And my last thing, I'm going to be trying the spelling bee. I've never run a spelling bee, I've never, actually never taken part in one. So, I'm going to be doing that, that's gonna happen in January, and I just want all of you to know that you're on my short list of potential judges. So, thank you. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Chris Benedict from the Career Academy.
Good evening, good evening. Work-based learning, Student of the Month, Laura Lime. I was currently working at the Kitchen &amp; Company in Columbia City. Laura completed her Culinary Arts Pathway and her Capstone project here at the WCA. So, we nominate one every, every month for our work-based learning students. 8th grade students are gonna complete Semester 1, their credits in Preparing College and Careers and Intro to Ag, which are high school credits. They'll be wrapping that up here at the end of this week in Semester 1. Excited to get the 7th graders to come out in Semester 2 and take part in their, in their college and career classes as well. So, today, actually, our 8th graders went around and toured all the 11 different programs that we have, so they can start to sign up for their freshman academies for next year to determine which way they wanna go. This year, we're gonna try to make sure that we meet the needs of all of them. If they want to kinda maybe do half and half of one, we're gonna allow them to have that opportunity to do so. If they maybe wanna do half skilled trades, half ag, or half public service and half engineering, we're gonna make it to where the red day, blue day matches up, where they can have a little bit more of an opportunity to maybe experience something a little bit outside of that. So, we went through that today, they, they got that signed up. Those forms will be going home to parents, so they know what they signed up for, and we'll forward those down to the counselors of the high schools, so when they get ready to sign up for their other core classes, they'll have that already for the WCA. Other program tours will take place late January for our sophomores, freshmen, and juniors. January 22nd will be our sophomores and juniors that are already here taking a class to see if they wanna re-up for the next year to go into year two of that particular program, or if they wanna change programs, they can do that. And then February 1st will be our sophomores and juniors that do not come out currently. We'll bring them out, let them tour all 11 programs to see if they can fit it into their schedule for the following year. And then finally, our freshman students from the freshman academy will go around and start making their first selection into that career path. Engineering courses have been working on the following projects that utilize our plasma and cutting, plasma cutting and engraving technology for three different places. They're doing engraving, serving craze for Huntington University. They're doing some engraving coffee mugs for our Whitco Special Services Department, and Gene Rig Motors in Columbia City, they're also doing engraving of some coffee mugs. So, and able to kinda make that again a full-fledged business opportunity, so those kids get to see that from start to finish, that project. Agriculture, business, criminal justice, medical health science, and welding students are finishing up this week. That's their midterm for their Ivy Tech dual credit classes, so they're finishing that test this week to make that done. That's just a, that's just a midterm for Ivy Tech, but then they go into the next semester as well to get that full credit for Ivy Tech. So, they will be taking and wrapping up their testing this week. And then, the final thing there is, we've got over 70 credits earned in the alternative school through the Apex Program with our kids. We have three kids that have completed stuff and will be done graduating early because they've been working ahead and doing a really great job. So, over 70 credits earned as of Friday of last week, and when I came in today, I had four more that were, I had four more credits that we got done, so we turned those into Mrs. Cassie. So, that is it for me. Any questions? Awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
From Whitco Junior Senior High, Amy Evans.
Thank you. I had a lot of really good things on the report, I don't wanna go through all of them, but I'd really like to recognize our wrestling team for their second exemplary report from the IHSAA, as well as our girls' basketball team. When we get those, I don't think anything makes a better weekend for me when those pop up. So, huge congratulations to the coaches and the students that were a part of that. And I can't believe I'm not the only one who, I'm the first one to mention, we have winter break on Friday. So, maybe that's just me, but over break, we're holding a very large wrestling tournament. I know Mr. Singray may talk about it, but it's a really good chance to see what our kids are doing. This year, we have more wrestlers than we've had, and a lot of new wrestlers who have come out to be involved in the sport, and just to get to see those kids work through what it's like to start wrestling, you know, their sophomore year, junior year. But to be a part of this big tournament would be... part of this big tournament would be really nice if any of you guys would like to join us there. The final thing I'd like to talk about is our teachers are going to be doing an in-service the day we come back from break. Students are at home, teachers will be doing a two-hour professional development here, and then going to their individual schools, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll start with a few athletic updates. Facility updates, we ordered new wind screens for tennis football in our baseball facilities. We started a new two-year rotation for all facilities, so now that we have them in each facility, softball will be the first one to be replaced, and we'll keep those every two years and rotate. Also currently working on with maintenance, some plans to improve the safety of our bleachers and lighting in the football field and here in the WCA gym, adding a safer entrance, some railing, and some lighting. Some upcoming events, Mrs. Evans stole my thunder a little bit with our wrestling, but we are excited to be hosting a wrestling tournament again this year. Our coaches have done a lot of work in prepping for that. We'll have 10 teams here. That will be called the Matt Kuntz Wrestling Classic, and that will be Saturday, December 30th, so sort of right in the middle of our winter break. Before that, we have our girls' basketball Alumni Night on Friday, December 22nd, so this Friday, we'll have some former Whitco athletes there to sort of support them and also promote our girls' basketball program Friday night against Wabash. The wrestling team will also have an Alumni Night over break on Tuesday, January 2nd versus Columbia City, so a big night there as well. And then, right when we come back from break, or soon after we come back from break, our Girls' Basketball Senior Night will take place Saturday, January 13th versus Southwood. A couple other updates with athletics, junior high girls' basketball has started practices, and junior high wrestling, they've started some preseason practices, but both will begin their regular seasons once we return from break as well. Feeder program, we have our fifth through eighth grade travel volleyball team set, and they have begun practicing, and they will begin participating in NIVA tournaments, area tournaments anywhere between here, Elkhart, Goshen, and Warsaw, starting in January and playing all the way through February, so excited about the growth of that program. And then also starting our wrestling club again this winter as well. We'll have more details on that being sent to the elementaries before break. Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Singray, I just want to thank you for taking the lead in, in getting the project of the IB Tech Center and the library going, you and Mr. Neely. And I was there this morning for breakfast, and there was a lot going on down there. Can you give us a little bit of an update on the progress and where you guys are with that? I didn't go in there because it looked like I'd just be in the way.
Yeah, so we've started, our Mr. Neely's class has gone in, and they've started a little bit of demolition work and moving some of the bookshelves, bookcases. So we're adjusting, I guess that would be the east and the south wall, sorry, I had to get, got a little turned around. The east and the south walls will be the IB Tech Center, so we've removed some of those bookcases, placed them in other areas of the library. And then we have an electrician coming in this week to drop power, and then new flooring will be installed December 26th. They're coming in to tear out the old flooring and put in the new, and then from there, we'll have the new study center cubicles installed, so. Mr. Neely's great to work with, he does a great job, he seems to know a little bit of everybody to, to kind of get us rolling in those projects, so appreciate him.
And I just think it's worth mentioning too, that you go over the improvements that we're doing, and you mentioned the bleachers at the football field, we're redoing and putting a ramp in to do away with those steps at the home bleachers where people seem to want it, that, that high step was there all the time, and so we're getting that taken care of for it.
Yep.
It's type two, so thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Thank you. Rhonda Snively, Director of Operations.
Good evening, and thank you. In transportation, we've been working hard to restructure the department. I'm excited that Kristen and her husband are here, and she's going to be taking over as our new transportation maintenance professional. She's been doing a fantastic job, like I said last month, just taking over and kind of picking up where Dustin left off, and she really is, is outdoing herself in the garage and doing an excellent job. We've been fighting some illnesses, so on top of all that, we've both been driving almost every day and trying to keep up. We're excited that, starting next week, we're going to have a part-time technician, so we'll have some help out there, and then we're working hard to get somebody in the office to kind of pick up in that area as well. We got the plows ready, hopefully we won't ever need them, is my hope, but after today, we'll see. On the maintenance side, a Havel was going to be here over Christmas break to install water in the building trades room. I know Mr. Neely has been anxiously awaiting that for quite a while, and we're finally going to get that done for him. D-Wing has been cleared out, and it's ready for demo. Everything that we've, we're keeping has been moved to the storage unit or moved out of there and stored in a place where they're able to get to it if they need to, so that's, that's all ready to go. Looking to fill two open positions, one, Brian Menzie has retired from Pearson Elementary, so we're going to be filling that, and then we also have a part-time opening here at the Career Academy, so if you know anybody interested, have them give me a call. New hoop switches, exciting news in the basketball, those are done. Those got put in last week, and I think they're working good. And I'm working with Barry to get some painting done over Christmas break in the locker room, deep cleaning bathrooms in the gym area, just spruce those up a little bit. Sometimes that's the only impression people get of our school, and we want it to be a good one. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Carrie Walmer, the Director of Special Services.
Good evening. Last month, I had reported that we were getting ready to submit our December 1 report to the state, and just to kind of give a recap of the information that we got back from that, last year, we reported 293 special education students. This year, we had an increase of 34, so we reported 327. We had 55 students move in with an IEP, and 64 seven, 64 students that withdrew to another school corporation. We had 19 initial evaluations, and as of December 1, just this, this school year alone, our department has processed 281 IEP documents. As far as coming up, we're going to have training opportunities for our secondary staff to address Indicator 13, which is another compliance category monitored by the IDOE for our transition goals and services for students that are in the secondary programs. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jason Klein.
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things. We are planning some in-services for Schoolkeeper and Power School internally within our department, and we are also working on in-services for, sorry, Parent Square for all, for all staff, a little bit of extra training to get everybody up to speed on that. I would like to say thank you to Janet Malloy for her years of service here, she is retiring at the end of the year and will be taking a cafeteria substitute position, and I just wanted to say happy holidays, and I hope everybody has a wonderful, wonderful season. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. A Superintendent update, Mr. Pavarnik.
Thank you. We received an anonymous donation of $250 to be used for student needs at Pearson Elementary School, and then we received $405 for the Whitco Career Academy from Tom and Pam Cassie and our Pam's lake founder Pete Mitchell. We're very happy and humbled to receive those gifts for our students. And I want to acknowledge Mrs. Evans and the high school team, and they put a great breakfast on this morning before school for all the staff, it's kind of a entry pathway out for, for two weeks, it was very nice, and I was pleased to be part of that this morning. And then the IB Tech Center is, is underway. We have a lot of construction all around that's going on at Whitco for the betterment for our students, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pavarnik. There are no public comments tonight, so we're going to move on to our business reports and consent agenda. We've all had an opportunity to look through those. I do want to just make note of a couple of retirements that we have coming up. Sandra Dockery has served for 22 years at Whitco, most recently as the cafeteria manager at South Whitley. And Mr. Wayne Slender has served for 43 years. He will be retiring effective July 31st in 2024. He's been a gym teacher, a history teacher, and Director of Driver Education, so we want to say thank you to those folks, and congratulations on their long service, we appreciate it. I would entertain a motion to accept the business reports and consent agenda as appreciated, or as presented, excuse me.
I move we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented. I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the business reports and consent agenda as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay, because the executive session on November 8th was not as advertised.
Motion passes four to one. In new business, we have 7.1 as a recommendation to award a bid for the junior senior high D-Wing renovation and addition project. Can I get a motion for that, please?
You're on 7.1?
Yes.
I make a motion to order a bid based on the information given, 7.1.
I second it.
So properly moved and seconded, that we accept the bid that we've been given based on the information for the junior senior high D-Wing renovation and addition project, is there any discussion on that?
I just caught a board's attention to the bid tab that we have in front of you, that list all the five bids that we had, that we had our bid opening last week, and then we went over these with Scott Falk from Whiteman, and the question that came up there for us to ponder, we asked him to check was PVC, but both below and above grade, and as I indicated in my Superintendent's Report I put out every Friday, that's that, they reported back after checking with the engineers, that the PVC was the best way to go for that project. And with that being said, we are still recommending that the board approve the bid which is listed as number one for this project, which I think is very exciting to get this going finally in our campus down there, is that this bid will be awarded to Shinko Construction Incorporated with all the alternates that are listed.
And Mr. Pavarnik, when will this construction start?
The D-Wing is cleaned out, and as soon as we get it approved tonight, I'm, Mr. Scott Falk is, he's actually watching this live right now out there to see when it passes, so we're looking for this to start yet in the month of December, early January, so they're all kind of geared up and ready to go, so it's ready to go.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of accepting the bid for Shinko Construction, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. It's exciting night for Whitco and our students and our middle school.
In 7.2, we have the approval of the field trips that we have listed. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I move that we approve the field trips as presented.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded, that we approve the field trips as presented, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. We have no old business at this time. Mr. Pavarnik, do you have any miscellaneous administrative items?
I do not, just want to say prayer one, to have a safe and happy and very merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous school board items, the Board of Finance, and reorganization meetings are Wednesday, January the 10th at 4:00 and at 4:15, followed by a work session, and those meetings will be here in the Academy's lecture room. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
So properly moved and seconded, that we adjourn tonight's meeting, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year, be safe.
Thank you.